But all this meeting to order the select board on the number eighteen twenty twenty five at six P M. First thing up is additions and deletion.
I want to add one under potential votes. It is for the Losol parade potentially use the town snow dump when weather dependent. I know I'm afraid it's just here if we talk about a little later. I would ask if we probably put it early on in the vote so you can get out of there afterwards.
Okay.
We can. Right, but we can delete the first. Fondelle. Comment about the conservation easement.
Yeah, do you want to put it in discussion? So we should know.
That is second and put now.
You're that chair?
Yeah. Which basement are we proposing?
Just now, we're gonna vote on the. Fundraising, but not on the easement.
But it's under discussion.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that it?
Uh, that's it for me. I don't know if anyone else has any additions or additions.
I don't. Hey. Distance comments?
I really am gonna try to keep it brief, but we know I have a problem back.
We have three minutes right now for.
My name is Byron Kelly from Woodstock. And what I hear about, first of all, you all know why I started because there was divisiveness within the community over short term rentals. And I've enjoyed or not every meeting I come to, and I appreciate everything our boards and our manager does for the community. Doesn't mean I always agree with you, but I appreciate everything you do. One thing I wanted to comment on, and I was hoping Cliff was gonna be here to congratulate him. Happy that um, one of the things that I saw is important to him is affordable living. Like we all talk it. And I spoke to Laura before, and sometimes talking to talk and walking to walk are two different things. And I think we have to make some hard choices on that. The other thing I've often felt, one of the reasons why I'm probably a pain in some of your necks from time to time. And I know I'm a minority. I'm a minority of nine percent of people that have lived in Woodstock before nineteen ninety. That's of our total population. I think it's seventy five percent of our population has been here less than fifteen years. Fifty percent almost forty eight percent, I think, has been here less than ten years. So it's, well, things seem to be changing. Things stay the same if you look at history. I remember back in nineteen sixty, my father made a lot of money in real estate. I'm broke to the standard and commented. While everyone thinks they're getting rich off the flatlanders, selling that paying the price for the houses they're paying. We're gonna see our community change. But we still say the same thing. We don't call people flatlanders anymore. I don't think. But things do stay the same, and history is important. So hopefully, when the nine percent people come in and speak, people learn from history instead of repeated. On the affordable housing, I just wanted to talk briefly that I believe, and I mentioned Laura once. I believe that we have to look at more than just development in the village, which we know is really a hole for two years. So what are we to put on whole well development? And we have to consider, um, my father also used to say, they don't make more land. But we can't restrict the land that's available. And one of the things is our um, our ridge line. We've got the gigantic map of ridge lining where people think it's not developable. When you could easily have an engineer say, no, there's might be hundreds of acres that could develop. This should be looked at, but I'm just putting that out there. I know not in my backyard.
You got thirty seconds.
Yes, you have. Um, the other thing is. Public transparency. Lori, you know, I respect you immensely. You know, I respect you immensely. I don't want to cut off in thirty seconds. However, um, we had good candidates that you all have a hard choice to make for the placement select person. They made the choice. I accept that. I've noticed in the year and a half plus I've been coming here, we do more. Executive sessions that I've ever known in my life.
Got to finish up.
When you're selecting the select person and they've all spoke to you. I think going into the executive session to talk about them, I understand why you might want to. But how does the community know what our elected officials are looking for for the future of this community? If you don't talk about the good and the bad of each one of them, or not the bad, what you're looking for.
Thank you.
I don't think it's a bad.
Any other citizens comments?
I'm Beverly Homestown, and I live in South Woodstock, and I have. Been on design review board for about twenty years. I moved to Woodstock in two thousand and two. And shortly after that, I was approached about being on the board. And as you all are aware, we have retired from. Design review as a group, and we strongly feel, I'm only speaking for myself today. But to have a beautiful town like this. Be told that there is no need for. Design background to help with the regulations. Is absurd. Not one person on the development review board has a design background. And almost one hundred percent of us do. I was A S I D interior design. We have an architect on the committee. We have Jack Rossi, who's a landscape designer. Larry does not, I believe, have any design background. And um. Jill Nyberg. Has more knowledge than most of us about historic situations and also works in Washington, D C. So whether we all get together or not, my reason for being here today is when a committee is formed, call it development review slash design or whatever. We must have. Several. Design people on that committee. To have a committee that has nobody with any design background and no schooling in that sort of thing makes no sense. For the town of this story. So I hope I gather that you can't really do anything, but we have to keep pushing towards this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other citizens comment?
Uh, Wendy has her hand up online.
Okay.
Hi, thank you. Um, thank you, Eric. Wendy Marinin. I live in the village. Um, and I want to uh, support Beverly Homestones comments and add um, a suggestion. I've, we've uh, also spoken in front of the village trustees, and we've been encouraged to attend planning commission meetings. As there's a lot of very um. In-depth and serious work and a lot of changes being proposed. And I have a suggestion. I um. They're, they're working through a document, and in order to understand. What is being done is being called redlined, but the chain proposed changes are not easy to find on our website. And I'm wondering if the select board could ask the planning commissioner, I'm not sure what the protocol would be, to have. The, the link somewhere right on the top of community development and planning's page. I happen to know how to dig for the current draft, but it's moves around and it's not labeled. It's part of materials. And if we're gonna encourage public input, which is what we're being told by our government elected officials, we really need to let people know how to access what. We're trying to understand and do. So that's my suggestion tonight in terms of visibility on the website, and thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thanks, Wendy. Any other? Anything else that we can do?
Um, I've seen nothing. Managers report. Uh, yeah, a few things. One, um, I attended the high school today for a meeting with the Laura, what was that delegation?
Education committee. I was education.
After they did a tour of the district of Woodstock, and I was there for a half an hour, listening to some of the residents give feedback. So I just want to thank the residents who showed up and expressed opinion, and also the delegation of coming down in Woodstock. So thank you to everyone there. Right now, Abby Sherman in our office, along with Seth Appelfeller. And Two Rivers and the National Park Service are working together on a flat grant. Actually, up to two point two million dollars to be rewarded. So we were very tight deadline to turn around. But they're working quite hard on it, and we'll submit it before the deadline. Hopefully, we'll hear good news as soon as possible. But um, it's to help increase access to the national parks. So we're looking at. The sidewalks going up central bridge repairs. And then a trail from the National Park down to the Rainbow School as well. So we'll have that all included with the work as soon as possible. So thank you all for your work on that.
When, when's the deadline?
December second.
Oh, so it's there.
First, yeah. Yeah, so they've been meeting a lot in the last uh, few, few days if it's going. Obviously, the shutdown kind of took some momentum out of it. So we're working, building National Park now, they're back in it, so they're working with us as well to get it submitted.
Can I just ask a follow up? Sorry. Is there a world, and I guess I'd love to know the competition level of the grant, and also if there's a chance we're not awarded, like, is it a, a. An amount that we could be awarded up to two point two million dollars, or the two point two or nothing?
So I do reckon from wrong, it's two point two totally allocated state of the laws. And um, the thought is there won't be a lot of competition. Doesn't mean we'll, we'll get it.
Yeah.
But we'll go for the whole thing. And also it happens.
Thank you.
Is that correct? Okay. Uh, what else? Uh, so this past Saturday, um, we hosted a tour of the wastewater plants for about four hours. I want to thank the boardroom super ten, Allison Clarkson, and Chad Kimble both were able to attend as well. Um, so you come and see kind of the shape of the current plans, what the plan is for the renovation. Um, and kind of get a sense of why we're doing this. Uh, I sent a blast today with more information with a website that is live. Uh, the website's now on our website, so you can kind of go get more information. Um, and we'll be hosting some of the forums soon, as we'll discuss later on the agenda. There's one thing, you know, we showed up on Saturday to the tour and who helped organize it, well, Tanner. Um, then Tim, Alex, and Cody from Wastewater planned with Arrow Bay as well. Until Cody left, I watched Woodstock Blues and the Fall Championship, unfortunately, up in Burlington. I'm gonna give a quick promotion to my sub stack. I've been trying to post more often for everyone. I also posted listserv, but if people want. Get information quickly or then get updates on these on listserv, I subscribe to our sub stack. I find on the website and also listserv tomorrow morning. Uh, finally, Thanksgiving's next week, so town hall will be closed Thursday and Friday. Uh, so town staff, public works will be closed. Hopefully, no snow. In the past, our public works who has had snow in every holiday, so we're hoping for a fight some of them. Uh, but the emergency services will be open and working as always on Thanksgiving and on Friday.
Uh, that's all I have. Okay, um, but I'd like to do. Should have done it at the beginning of the meeting. Welcome, Cliff. The select board.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. It's great to be here. Sorry, I couldn't be in person at a prior work obligation in Portland, but. Excited to be there in person more frequently and help however I can.
Thank you. Next up is discussions. The plaque policy, Lori's plaque and town property.
Um, okay, so I was, um, so Ruby's been working with the, the village. To try to get permission to put a plaque up. Uh, I know I'm correct if I'm wrong, uh, but it mentions everyone who donated for the new star to go up on Tom. They were in front of the trustees last week. To get permission for it on green. The trustees then asked if it would be possible to put it on the triangle next to green in front of the covered bridge. Uh, that would then require your approval and the trustees' approval. So that's why we're here today. I was out there twice in the last week. Monday morning with our chief, uh, the public works director and the water department look at options for their. They don't. Love the idea of going there, um, just for the sake of, you know, size or anything else, but they thought if it was gonna go there. The best option would be to kind of place it where the current bench is. And then move the bench, either completely away or maybe move the bench to the other side of the sidewalk, either facing the green or facing. Back towards where the plaque is. So that's kind of. The most information I have. Uh, on that, that old triangle is on a large room on the brass side. Near us to the street, you have water pipes coming across the street, and then you have electrical wiring going both sides. So you don't want to put it there. Um, then behind the tree, you have a bunch of signs. We have a moving the signs, but that may cause its own issue. Uh, that tree maintenance may not be dying. One side of it's definitely dead, the other side of it, we're not sure yet. Um, so we kind of agreed on the park benches there. That would be the best place, which flip side board wants to do it on town property. You have a sign up of all those departments. There's actually up to you to decide whether you want a plaque. If you wanted to block, if you weren't there, or you want to get other options. Or make my life miserable and take it back to the trustees. I can, I agree with this on the next month in a trust meeting meeting. Um, so that's, that's all the information I have. And Norm's here, if you want to ask me any questions. I believe in your package, you have the outline of what it'll look like, size of it. You know, I think it was a few inches too large for what was under the ordinance for the trustees. Uh, though they do have ability to print a variant if they want. And that's how I know where the town does not have any policy on plaques.
And I'll just.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, my concern is that we don't put policy on plaques, and I don't think we should start by putting, I think we should start with the policy. And um, I don't think we need. Like the extent of the policy that the village has. I think we just need some basic. Rules about size, location, um, materials, who owns the plaque, you know, how does it get organized to put there, who does maintenance? And we move it if we find we don't like where it is, just some basic. Rules for the select board to follow, and I, I, you know, there's, I think, over seventy nonprofits in this town. And I would hate to have our public lands start to look like a memorial garden, so I'd like to start with the policy before we start approving plaques.
Can I just ask, does it think we, we have no power to put something on the green because it's the village green?
So it's technically, so the town owns the green, the trustees manage the green, and I believe in the town plan. To send in the states that the trustees manage the green. So that's kind of where we're at. So if we want to go deeper into what that all means, I'm happy to. I can't do it publicly, but I can do it offline.
No, I'm just curious because it, it seems like every. How many, um, I guess I'll respond to Susan's point, which is. I, I do feel like a good amount of town and village resources and everyone's time has been. Um, already used in this discussion, which has been quite extensive. Is there a world in which we could come up with something tonight and also simultaneously go on the plaque tonight? So we do a.
I, yes, uh, you can't, you can't create an ordinance tonight. The ordinance would take sixty days to, to, once you vote on it, to come, come to effect, and no, nothing we've done until that ordinance was in effect. Um, similar to your sewer and water abatement policy, you could create a policy at a whim. Um, so you'd be created policy today if you wanted to. Um, that would not be. I'd probably advise against creating a policy. I don't know, I don't know, things like.
We also, I mean, I, this is the first, to my knowledge, we, that this body has publicly addressed it. I don't know what other. You know, I know the village has put time into it, but I don't think that.
Yeah.
This board has done anything.
We haven't. Um, and I just think that, you know. Having a policy or procedures, it, it still comes down to our decision. It's like the trustees, they, you know, somebody come in. And meet every criteria, and the trustees could just say, no, we don't want it. So the policy's only as good as. The, the board's deciding whether or not they're gonna follow it or not.
I, I mean, I think, and I'm curious what Carrie and Cliff think, but I, I hear Susan's point, like, we don't want to be willy nilly about this. At the same time. I don't, you know, like, it's not a stated objective or goal that we, like, come up with a policy or plaques. So I'm, I'm. I'm trying, I, I feel like we need to strike a balance here. I don't know what that looks like yet, though. Maybe someone smarter than me has a suggestion.
Carrie or Cliff?
Yeah, I would say I'm no smarter than you, but I, I tend to agree with Susan's point that it's a. I just would want to have something that we treat every citizen in a uniform way. So if we do open this up, like, I think it can be pretty simple. We could look at the village, you know, what the village does and just modify that if we need to, you know. I think we probably don't need all of that. We could just narrow it down to what the most critical things are.
I agree. I don't think it needs to be complex. I think we don't need to reinvent any wheels, but there's probably some. Pretty low hanging fruit we can just adopt.
Any other comments from the board? By one's editing process.
Byron Kelly Woodstock. I did not under comment.
Your actions are otherwise, Byron.
In June, in June, I mentioned it. In July, I gave a very detailed brief. In two thousand seventeen. The change to say that the town rose. That the town was responsible for the village roads, I believe, was completely, and it was outlined wide. Unacceptable. It was not within statute. Therefore, the village still should be in charge of it, and the village, in my opinion, should have the decision on that, and you shouldn't be even arguing. But for some reason, that memo was totally ignored. And when I hear this comment, I realize it was totally ignored. It frustrates me. So. There was never a vote. That was acceptable under the village charter.
Uh, I hate to find ways to complicate your lives, Roger Logan, Woodstock Village. I personally agree that this is. This is a decision that should not be made without a set of policies and proceed, or procedures in place. You know, whether I like the idea of having a plaque or not. Um, it should be considered, and personally, I think we should get less loosey goosey about. About overriding policies. Um, I realize that that's within the power and it needs to be, be that way, but I think it should always be extremely. Considered when that happens. Um, and I'm not speaking for the, the village conservancy. But we've been looking at all sorts of different, as you've seen some of them, different design. Concepts for the village green, and once we start putting things. On our landscape as a fait accompli, then we no longer have intentional design. We have. Willy nilly design. So I would suggest that before you consider this, you, you. Take an hour and write a policy. Thanks.
Any other comments? So. Who's gonna write the policy?
You here, Paul, some media, my staff. Um, so I guess my, I guess before we talk about policy.
That's fair.
Sure, yeah. I, I think. So that Ruby has a plaque redesign that I think is made, built, paid for, et cetera. I think you have the outline.
Yeah.
In, in, in your, in your book, but I guess not to put the board on, you know. And awkward, but. Do you want? Do you want policy created? As if this doesn't exist, you know, with the knowledge of what this plaque looks like, it doesn't exist. Do you want? A policy that acknowledges exists and therefore.
Can I reframe that for you?
Yeah.
I think what you're trying to ask is what is important for us to include in the policy?
Yes.
Okay, so I think Susan said it's important that uh, people know that it's town property. Move it, maintain it as needed. That would be one thing. I'm trying to think of like, I mean, I haven't looked at the village's policy. I know it's extensive. I don't think any of us want to copy that policy, but. Maybe our homework is to find things we like in that policy and then just email you what we care about out of that. Does that sound like a good? On the case?
I found one in another town.
Okay.
I guess in the meantime. Is there, got into on give rotary to what the next step, sorry, do you want to go back in front of the trustees saying that the select board is. Looking at creating a policy for monuments and plaques, and then there's no decision we made. Do you want to wait until you have a policy and have a recon back? I'm just.
Yeah, no, um. I hate to ask a very complicated question. If, if we own the green and they maintain the green, will our policy override their policy for the green?
I would not want to answer that.
Okay.
Well, that's basically also for taking.
Okay, I guess that would, I would be curious. I would, it would.
I, I'd say, let me say this, knowing everything, a decision like that would probably create a chain of events that I'm afraid to predict how that would end.
Okay.
Think a change of effects would be creating.
We're pulling at a thread. Um. Okay. Well, I guess maybe should we decide ahead of time if we want this policy to be for all town property and murals or just for the.
I think it's all town.
All town property? Yeah, okay.
We don't want to have to do multiple.
No, no, yeah. I, I definitely, but do, do we want to give them guidance? I, no, we don't want to give them guidance.
So I guess, I guess then. The select board is going to look, create a policy for monuments. Not to give a vote tonight on the road of black. And then Ruby can decide the next steps on their own. If they want to go back to the trustees. Or wait until you have a policy created, or wait, I don't know, there's a timeframe on this, Norm. I don't know what you guys are looking at.
His money gets approved.
Yeah, I don't, why would they go back in front of the trustees?
Why not? Well, because they asked me to come to you guys. And they had this new idea of the maintenance triangle.
Right.
Which they don't govern, you do. So um, I was flying here. While we worked this weekend. Now, I can go back and say. They don't like it, or we gotta wait sixty days for a policy plan. I don't know. I guess.
Putting it up where the stars. Wouldn't that be easy?
Well, it would be easy. The, the thing is, it's just very inaccessible for a lot of people, you know, I mean, grandparents and grandkids and. And people that, that can't type to the top of my town. We could put it up. But this was a consideration of people who can find our town that you see who benefits that are. So possible.
I, I don't think we should make them go back in front of the trustees. Um. I think you can tell them that we're gonna make a policy. Right? And then we'll go from there. I don't know.
What's their choice, whether they want to go back to the trustees or not?
I mean, it's that it come back.
Well, I don't have an answer. So I mean, I guess, when they said come back. You strike out, it's like.
And I mean, to. Yeah, they, 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 they want to, but you agree a policy that makes it, and also for that plaque to go up in the town potentially.
Right, then they.
Uh, we're getting a policy, and then you go and have the plaque. So there's no guarantee that the policy is going to. Let them have the plaque where they want on property.
Always. Like landlord decision. Wendy had her hand up, and maybe that down. I'll put that up. So I'm gonna do another citizen comment.
Um, just a suggestion of to, with the, with respect to general with the policy. What I think should be factored in is what is the benefit for the whole town? Um, when a plaque is requested, and I don't mean to spark a controversy, and I'm not judging whether or not we should have this. And I don't mean to spark a controversy, and I'm not judging whether or not we should have this plaque or not. But the truth is, the town doesn't own the star. The Rotary maintains it and the, it's on, it's on trust land. So technically, I don't know where this falls in terms of. Uh, you know, I, I mean, I know the community celebrates that we have the star and values that, but. It's just a technicality I wanted to point out, uh, when we're considering what are the plaques for. It's not. Um, it's a town, it's a Rotary effort, which is celebrated by the town, but it's not owned by the town. Does that make sense? What I'm saying? So it just makes it a little. Different, this case, a little different, but I am in support of a general policy so that you can address each request. Fairly, as was stated earlier, but I just wanted to point that out, um, that little glitch. Thanks.
Okay, so. People create their policy, yeah.
I would also quickly say, like. I just don't want this to be another case of us imagining moribles that are unlikely. I've been on these boards for nine years, and as far as I can remember, this is the first instance of someone asking for a plaque. So I don't want to overcomplicate something that may be quite simple.
Thank you.
Do we want to move this? No, don't.
Uh, I mean, next to observation, take one or a few minutes. Next three, two, also done, right?
Okay, so, Rosa, the policy. Wish one of, wish one of plant renovation updates.
Yeah, so as I mentioned in my, um, managing reports, uh, with the tours on Saturday, the website is live. Uh, the thirty percent design review will, review should be submitted, uh, in the next few weeks. Uh, we're from Hill, Phil Tanner, more marketing, um, and. I think we're moving along pretty, pretty smoothly through our March votes, our town meeting vote in March. I don't have much to have you on that, just so people know it's happening, um. I think Laura mentioned today that she's gonna be on TV on Fridays. I'm sure you'll bring this up, um.
Do you want to tell them what the website is so they can find?
I don't have it on the.
It's Woodstock Main WWTF.com.
Such a bad outfit.
Uh, so it's on a website now. It's gonna be able to serve from morning, uh, so you'll be able to get that way as well, uh, as well. Um, we're all excited. It's gonna be the first CGS system in France, which is, which is awesome. Um, and I think we have some videos in bright post of the, how it works, which is really cool technology, uh, so we'll do that as well. Yeah, have any questions on what we're at so far?
No. You know, do, uh, public forums?
Yeah, that's next one. So I think, um, you know, I started doing, uh, open office hours, like one hour a week, um, but I think we also probably do. Public forums on this. I think when people know the select board is going to attend, then we'll only show up. I don't think we need to take a water vote and be everywhere every single day, but probably maybe at least, I would say, once a week. Between now and, and the vote will probably be helpful. Um, so maybe offline, the board can tell me their availabilities. Uh, and we've got to schedule something similar, a lot of morning meetings, afternoon meetings. Uh, and then some special locations as well, to find good to word out. Right, so make sure that all five members are interested and willing to participate in public forums. I think it's helpful when people get different voices. So if all five of you are okay, we can kind of put on that out.
Works for me.
And as always, for everyone listening, we'll try to avoid the busy times because, so we won't be at the end on Friday night or Montfair on Monday morning. Um, and try to be respectful of their business as well.
Land, Vermont Land Trust Grant on Dovac Conservation Easement.
So I think that's just a kind of an update of where we are with, um. The Land Trust and Vermont Housing Conservation Board. We have. Applied to the grant. They've told us that. Our portion of the grant is most, I mean, nothing's cast in stone, but it's most, most likely will be six hundred thousand dollars. For the entire pro, entire property. They automatically exclude the reservoir, the area with the water tank and offices and the parking lot. And they're also willing to exclude ten acres down by. Everything else for that six hundred would be conserved. Um, we were talking about the grant in December, and I think, you know, Donna Foster from Vermont Land Trust is on. Um, Zoom and suggested today that. Perhaps January might be better. This kind of feels like this moving target that. But January needs to be it. Um, so we're. We don't need to vote. We had it down as a vote. It doesn't need to be voted on until they actually make the grant. And then things have, happen, have to happen pretty quickly. So under the vote section, where you'll hear from me again, is, is the question of, is six hundred enough? Um, there is an individual willing to privately fundraise. Uh, and so I think what we're looking for from us and input from those in attendance is. You know, what's the number that? If any, that everyone's comfortable with saying we're going to permanently conserve this property.
And, uh, Donna, you there, right?
Yes, I am. Hi.
At the time of the grant potentially being approved by the Land Trust and then being signed by the select board. Do we need to have all the details work out by then, like what's in the easement or is it not be done after the fact?
It can be done after the fact. You'll have with the purchase and sale, you'll have a draft of the conservation easement. And then we have a chance to, to, um. Work on that together. And just to be clear, the December or the January meeting is Vermont Housing Conservation Board voting on the grant. Yeah.
Questions?
And we'll say we held, I think, three, four public forums and about forty, forty people come out for them and.
Oh, I had great attendance. I had a few of them, nice. Overwhelmingly, um, interest in, in conserving.
Uh, I think Krim has just ended up. When you read your public comment.
Yeah, hi, sorry, I'm, I actually lost a little bit track of the conversation. I, I wasn't on video, but I was listening. Are we still talking about the wastewater? Is that a grant that has to do with the wastewater plant or have we shifted, uh?
This is on the Von Dell property out.
Okay. Sorry, so, so, so are we done? I was waiting for, when you opened the floor for questions. Is there going to be time for questions on the wastewater plant or is that, is that done with?
Uh, we have, we gone for that, yeah.
No.
We, we moved on.
Oh, okay, all right, um. Can I ask a question? We're still late.
First pleasure. It is a quick one.
Yes, I, where, where can I find the financial information on this? I went on the website. And I don't see any, uh, by the way, it's very well done website. And the second question is there, um. Do you, do you think that the finance committee is going to be at all involved in, uh, working on that project, helping the town with that?
Uh, so the first one, the finance, uh, information is not up there yet. We're waiting for the thirty percent design to be reviewed and approved, and then we'll have the total finances. Uh, on top of that, Susan Ford and myself have been meeting with Phil Tanner to work through different allocation potentials. Um, so we'll have that as soon as possible. Um, I can't speak for the select board wants to use the finance committee. I think. Their model that you all put together could be helpful, um, but I probably want to look into it more. Um, without a private decision for the select board, they want to, you know, um, use expertise of the finance committee for the next few months.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
I mean. Cost is a cost. It's not like.
There's a lot of, there are decisions. I mean, Royal Tanner's been really helpful. With us in different variables that can be laid out to change, um, things, which we can, or once we have more information on.
Yeah.
So there, there are a lot of different, there are some variables that need to be decided upon.
And once we have that, I could always pass the finance committee a meeting, present that to them, see what they potentially view in the timeframe we have.
Okay, thanks.
Bye.
Okay, so now we're.
Alex, no, don't, smoke it off. Okay, do you want me to? Yeah, please, no.
So you're representing the Wassel Committee.
Um, I think, uh. Some things, if some things are changing, um, and, uh, the Wassel, you kind of need the town's help again to assist, so I'll let them take it over from there.
So that, last year, we had a little bit of a, an issue with, for thirty-three years, we've been lining up the Wassel Parade down by the Mill Building. And utilizing all that property to stage the, the parade. We had a little issue with, uh, left horse poop and some horse pee and, and so they. The Mill Association. Basically approached us and said they don't want us to stage there anymore. Um, so we've tried to work things out with them, but it, it just seemed, didn't seem like we were gonna. Be able to. Come to a compromise. We actually, they were gonna charge us five thousand dollars a year to utilize it, so for three hours. So anyway, so we've been down there. Um, we have, we think we figured out a solution, as long as we don't get two and a half feet of snow. That we use the snow dump road as a lineup for all of the carriages and, and people can park their. Their horse trails down there, and it kind of keeps it off the, the main mill road. But, um. And I talked to Sergeant O'Keefe and he, he suggested that maybe we cone. The middle of the road so we can keep the traffic, our traffic on one side and, and leave that open so that if people want to shop. There's a clothing store there, you know, if people want to shop there, they can get in. We're gonna have overstaffed people down there so that we'll help with the traffic. We're actually telling all of our participants, we have. Twenty-four so far, which is good. And, and none of, none of our big locals have even, even Billings Farm hasn't even entered theirs yet, and they have two or three. Um, so we're just asking for permission to use the, the snow down road. Um, as a staging area for the parade. And parking it for three or four hours.
And you guys have liability insurance for the whole event, right?
We do, yeah, yeah.
Is there a contingency plan if it snows?
Yeah.
Okay.
The contingency plan, if you really want to know. Kind of close to your house. So we've got permission from, um. The resort to be able to use the country club parking.
Okay.
Um, and we would actually be parking down the road towards Vale Field and park and. And we would stage kind of there and, and, you know, this is if we have. Big snowstorm. And the other thing is, if we have a big snowstorm, we'll only have half a bar. Which is, yeah, great, because they won't take those big trailers down. So that is our contingency, and we think it'll work. We hope we don't have to go there.
Yeah, I, I'm really curious. I guess I, I, it's a question for, uh, interim chief, O'Keefe, uh, in terms of, that's where other parades stage is down alongside Vale.
Well, and the alumni, it's all the way Court Street and all the way around.
Yeah.
And then they do go down to Vale Field and park and.
That's where all the fire trucks, I would like, because.
Right.
That's the part of the parade that my family participates.
So it's doable, that's within the loop.
Yeah.
We can, we can make that work.
Yeah, I'd just be curious if like. If that would be more feasible moving forward than the other, but I, I don't know enough about the traffic. I guess I'd be nothing to figure that out. If it makes more sense in the future than just so that.
The snow dump keeps with the traditional path of a. Parade, whatever.
It keeps with the traditional path. We can come in, um, by the east end, on Route Four. We don't have to go all the way around and, uh. And actually, when they come back, it's a good staging area for everybody. It's out of the way. And Billings brings. There's six come from there, so they kind of meet us at the, at the Elm Street Bridge and.
Is there, I dropped the date that you made a decision on moving from the snow dump, like two days before?
I think it's gonna be a couple of days and we're just gonna have to take the forecast and believe it. Kind of what I do with a turkey trot? It's all looking good. It's all looking good. I mean, a little, maybe a little moisture, but.
Um, I, my last question is just that if you're gonna, um. Use the snow dump for staging, but still. Use. That, um, that road.
Yeah, so, so here's what we, our plan is that we're inviting everybody to come at different, little different times.
Okay.
The, once they are, got everything together, they actually work their way to Sunstead Farm.
Okay.
So we keep everybody moving. It's not.
Yeah.
They're not there for a long time, but they will be using half of the.
No, I think that's great. I would just encourage you, and I, and you're probably already on top of this, to. I think there's six or seven owners of that road, including us. I mean, you're speaking in front of.
So we, we talked to them and they have already given us approval.
Right.
If we can use the snow dump.
Okay.
Any other questions? And I want to entertain a motion to the Wassel Parade to use the snow dump.
So moved.
So second?
Second.
All of them favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. One or two, not bad.
The question is, if you need a snow shovel or a horse poop shovel?
Horse poop shovel.
Or roller?
Are you volunteering, Roger?
Yeah.
I don't have rollerskate.
We can get you done. It's in the budget.
I think that would be dangerous.
Thanks, Tom. Hey, uh, sewer pay. Uh, yeah, I think last time this got, uh, placed on hold, uh, the request was for us internally to see if there's a history of. The board approving multi-year abatements. Um, and basically with all the technology to find that, we'd have to. Really just spot check random parcels and go in and see. Um, and so we were unable to confirm or deny if, uh, boards in the past have given, uh, larger abatements more than one year.
So I think we have to approve this abatement, but I would be interested in, um, adding to both our water and sewer. Abatement policies for the future, kind of a statute of limitations, because it's hard on our budgeting. To do multi-years. Obviously, we, we, we can't do that retroactively, so it would not affect this one, but. Um, I'd like to. I, I don't know if we have to. Check with anybody or we can just do that, not today, but maybe talk about that in December. Yeah.
Yeah, I can update the, the policy with, with, whatever.
The three year, yeah.
And then you can vote on it, uh, amended.
Also, now that we. It's going, it's not going to be like we're gonna have a lot more of us like we used to where people don't know that they're. Something's wrong with their bill.
As of right now, it, it'll be the same, it's the same process. We haven't changed it, but once we invest in more infrastructure and. Green?
Yes, sorry, I was having a hard time hearing you, actually. Um, uh, so, so I, I guess I heard that there was a vote and it passed for, for the approval of the, of the abatement, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, um, is there any information as to whether that's gonna be a credit on future bills or a refund?
Uh, normally we issue refunds.
You, you would, you would issue a refund, right? Okay, great, thank you. Um, ju- just a follow-up question, let me just lower my hand here before I forget. Um. I understand that you want to put in place a policy that, you know, would only have a look back of one year and I. I guess that, that would make sense. Are, are, are those accounts, um, audited at all by a third party or internally? To just to make sure that there aren't issues like that on the sewer and the water side, side, or is that not done normally?
Uh, and are in what sense?
Well, see if there's, you know, issues like the one, for example, I had encountered. And it was discovered just, you know, by coincidence, because I was talking to Robert about something.
No, we, I mean, we haven't historically gone back and, and checked every account to make sure they're accurate, um.
No, I, 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 I didn't mean at all go through all, but just spot check, just to make sure that, you know, things look the way they should look. I don't know.
Occasionally, when they, when they're doing the bill and if anything jumps out at them, they, you, you all go back and, and do a more thorough check.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. Okay, great, all right, thank you. Um, I guess uh the town will be in touch with me as far as the refunds. Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
The chance of the man.
Yeah.
Famous last words.
So slow.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, stuff is future of EDC grants and plan for ongoing grants award.
Yep, Abby Sherman's here to uh answer a question, if you have any, uh, but she did include a memo in your agenda. Um, this has been conversation the board has discussed a few times now. I think it's Abby's recommendation, correct me if I'm wrong, um, to kind of pause, interend any of the current grants through the EDC. That uh and offer new, new ones and then kind of. Let the ones that are currently exist kind of phase out as the process goes through. Um, I think she laid out in her memo reasons behind that. Um, but she's also brave enough to stay tonight and ask any questions, any straight questions that you may have, uh, that both may have on that process. Um, she's, uh, I see John started on, she's like John Specter a few times, you know, with a. Trainer uh today as well, who's a former housing advisor, um, studying my research, so um. I take a recommendation with uh a lot of confidence.
Well, the question is a couple of grants have never been touched.
Sure.
New comments?
Um, no, I would, I thank you, Abby, for the memo. I think I would just like to say, in addition to the housing incentive programs. We also discussed pausing the storefront incentive as well, which is. Technically active and we've only had one applicant for it since twenty eighteen, you know, um. And I think we also discussed um. Uh, having a deadline for any grants over two years to uh submit for reimbursement. So that we can kind of catch up.
Yeah, so two things, but so my, the spirit of this uh vote would be for all grants. That were created by EDC would be sunsets, you know, immediately or after, after the show and as other ones that phase out that currently exist.
Yeah.
I think there's one, maybe you said would just approve that, it'll still be a three-year process.
Yeah. Still um. In process, yeah, um, they still have some requirements they need to meet in order to get. Yeah, we've, I think, one for the end.
Yeah.
For a, a. Long-term to short-term rental conversion, so we have to wait for that, so, okay.
Yeah, I'd say just. About all grants unless they're already in, in the pipeline. That's easier than trying to pick and choose.
John hasn't had a.
Nope, none for me.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to say to Laura's comment, I um, or, or to the, there are very few grants. That are, uh, other than housing, that are, that have any kind of tail to them, so there, you're not really disadvantaging anyone, I uh, um. Abby has the list, there might be one, uh, that's not housing related, that could conceivably, you know, ask for funds, so I don't think you're. Not that it matters, but I, I don't think as a practical matter, there really are gonna be too many angry people rushing the doors of Town Hall to say. We, we want our money.
Maybe for other reasons.
I, I'm glad, I, I do wanna thank John and the whole EDC and even he did credit him for all the work they did on this stuff. Um, you know, as Laura's pointed numerous times, a lot of these grants helped a lot of things happen down. Um, so we wanna make sure we appreciate all the hard work they did uh on, on a lot of these and. You know, all the work they did to try to help with housing, help with childcare, help with businesses and development. Um, they did a lot of the work for a very long time and these grants are with that, so, so I think for that.
And the work that Abby does and that I think our staff continue to do is built on the foundation that they laid.
Yeah. And just a clarification, the EDC still does exist, Abby's still working with John and kind of trying the next steps. I know that's source files people, uh, but Abby and John are still kind of working on that a little bit, so the EDC has not been disbanded or any of that. Either working on a kind of reship in the focus.
That, any other comments from the board?
Um. I share. What you've all said.
Well, yeah.
I'm sorry, who are, who am I? That's pretty, it's very insubstantial, um, Roger Logan Woodstock. Um, and I'm also. Like to say to Abby, this is an impressive memo and I appreciate what you put into it. Um. I think at some point, whether now is the time or not, I would suggest that it would be good to formalize. Um, thanks and appreciation to people who've served on the EDC over the years. Um. They have. Accomplished things and they've also given us information to accomplish things. And I think, you know, one thing we've learned is don't nickel and dime the housing issue, look for. But, but that's something we learned by, by these programs, so I think it would. I don't, you know, I don't know if you guys do proclamations or something. But I, I think um they really have done a lot of work over the years. And I think a formal recognition of that would be appropriate at some point. Thank you.
I, to Roger's point really quick, I just wanna say, I think it's. There are so many things that the EDC has achieved. Uh, recently, I was reading an article about another town that had commissioned a housing study. And I thought to myself, how lucky are we that we've been building on the knowledge that we've had for like six to seven years now, thanks to the one that they commissioned. It wasn't that long ago, but like that's been a real driver of, of our goals. Um, and a lot of work that's been done here, so. A lot of foresight.
Yeah. And I, I, you're right, and I appreciate everything they've done, um, they've done a lot for the town and the community. Okay, so is there a motion?
To accept Abby's recommendation.
For the EDC funding.
Right.
Right.
Do we need to get more specific?
Yeah, I think that, 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 and uh, the um, sort of approval of any future EDC grants.
Stop funding any new EDC grants with uh. A sunset of two years for grants that are existing.
No, 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 no. I think we need to vote to sunset any active. Housing grant programs. And set a. Deadline for any outstanding grants over two years or.
For twelve weeks.
Uh, I'm just saying, uh, uh, what do we think? What do you think is fair? Two months? Uh, I, um, if no one's come forward after two years to like submit for, is there anybody that had, for example? I think there are a few outstanding.
Well, there, like, there's, there is one that was just approved.
Right, yeah, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about one that would be like. Uh.
A storefront incentive that they haven't asked for.
Yeah, the store, I mean, yeah, it would be like somebody who hasn't accepted or hasn't requested like the last payment. Of a grant that they started a prop of two years ago, does that make sense?
It's a little more complicated than that.
Okay.
Yeah, um, I think the earliest it can sunset is one year.
Okay. So it sounds like we don't need to have maybe a deadline for submission, or do you wanna have, what's helpful to you from us?
So, um. The, so for example, the ADU program, they have like three years after they've received the money that we continue to follow them and then we can release their leads.
Yeah.
Um, so the earliest of those could, we can release those links is three years, so there's still some follow-up. They have the money. Um, but yeah, I think, I think probably one year.
Okay. Do you wanna do this tonight, or do you just wanna say that we're not granting any future, like?
I'd say we're just, we could just say not granting any true to housing grants.
I think, yeah, I think it's all.
It's all.
All EDC.
Grants, not just house. Yeah, all, yeah, okay. Sorry, so I'm, I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So the most. And all open EDC grants.
All open and advertised EDC grants. Okay, I'll make a motion to end um funding and ending. Sorry.
Isn't it, aren't we ending the EDC grant programs and not necessarily, because if you say you're ending the grants, then you're.
That means that we're ending the funding for things that are might be.
The people who just got.
Yeah.
A grant. Yeah, I don't want it to be confusing.
So I think we're ending the EDC grant programs.
Okay. I'll make a motion to end the EDC grant programs as outlined by Abby.
Second.
All of them favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, Claire, no more approval any grants in front of the board, going forward, any outstanding grants will deal with and come back and we need a deadline in the future.
Yeah.
Okay. You need to tell Puddix color for that one.
Alright. That was a throw.
Just somebody starting fresh.
The budget allocation for what?
Yeah, so uh. Historically, when you own utilities, um, you can kind of try and allocate the costs, uh. Thank you, Abby.
Thank you, Abby.
Um, to the best of your ability across those different funds, uh, with the way what's like set up. Uh, there are a number of salaries that are allocated between the town, village and sewer. Um, now that we own the water system and we have a water department. Uh, the question before the board is, do you want those salaries allocated? Towards water as well. Um, so typically right now. My office, the finance office is split fifty-five town, twenty-five village, twenty percent sewer. For salaries across the board, um. In a, in a where, in a world where, and then public works is fifty-fifty pound sewer, um. In a world where you go twenty-five, uh, fifty-five, twenty-five, a ten, ten splits. Uh, what you're doing is basically moving that cost from the sewer over to the water users. Um, so that's an option for you, so I guess the first question is, do you wanna see? An allocation of some salaries in the water department, and if so, what would you want the allocation to be?
Is, is, is the twenty percent allocation?
Um. Reality.
Reality, or is it more than covers? The time that they spend on it. For sure.
And does that vary department to department?
It will vary department, when you talk about when, um. And billing, when it's sewer billing, I mean, that's a month, five, six weeks of probably just majority of sewer stuff. Uh, and then Robert's time on the budget and sewer and answer question, the abatements, um, working with. Any issues that arise, bonds that are go through, um, so twenty percent is probably maybe a little bit under finance. Uh, when it comes to like my office, it really depends. You know, this year's gonna be more than twenty percent because we're doing the wastewater plants. Um, other times it's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot, so you really try to. Find an allocation that seems correct, you know, um. There are no state statutes on how this has to be allocated, it's, it's really, can you justify the allocation to a user? So if a user comes to you and says, why is my bill this way, and you say, well, Eric spends roughly ten percent on water. So I feel. Twenty percent of sewer, we can justify that, and I think, and, and so we'll just justify that, we justify something a little bit different if you want to. Um, but as long as it's somewhat fair and balanced, we're looking for.
I think it makes sense to have the allocation, we're already allocating your time and staff time to sewer department. It's a water department, it's utility, so it makes sense to allocate, I think the question's just.
How much?
How much?
So just for, uh, we, we pull some numbers. Uh, so the allocation for sewer, it would kept it the way currently is, is the fifty-five, twenty-five, twenty split. About a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of salaries would be offset by sewer rates. If you went to uh fifty-five, twenty-five, ten, ten splits. You're looking at about seventy-five thousand dollars salary in sewers, seventy-five thousand dollars in water, um, so that's kind of how the allocation would be split and then. As you change it, it, it will, it will move differently.
Is this some, and this is something we could update, it's like we found like next year or two years, it's not an accurate reflection of like how human staff are spending time.
Correct, yeah, each, each by, by just using your ability though, yeah.
Yeah, so like the village, we could add more money to that.
Um. Thanks for laughing.
I mean, you killed the whole audience, I mean, the, the audience was. Don't, don't only pose any one person in the audience, but.
Well, if, 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 I, I think we go with the. Fifty, was it fifty?
Fifty-five, twenty-five is town village.
And then ten, ten. I mean, it's something we can change. Well. Your motion?
I'd recommend sticking with the ten, ten, so you don't change the village at least in this iteration, you know, but.
For your horse village, yeah. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to alter the budget allocation or to. Change the budget allocation for the water department to ten percent and the sewer to about maybe ten percent.
Is there a second?
Oh, sorry, I can't. And um, public works would be fifty town, twenty-five, twenty-five sewer waters, that. Follow the same process, so that. Sorry. I don't know.
Do I need to put that in the motion?
Yes, sir, yeah.
I'll make a motion to set the budget allocation as. Um, for. Town staff time, fifty-five town, twenty-five village, ten water, ten sewer. Um, and public works department. Fifty town, twenty-five water, twenty-five sewer. Second.
All of them favor?
Aye.
Yes. John, oh, I'm sorry, sure, go ahead.
You said John?
Yes.
John.
Just a very quick comment, if for the future, I don't think this is gonna change the direction of the town, or it's not, not. It's not immediately important, but for the future, when you do these calculations of allocations of costs that reflect the allocation of the time that executives spend. You have to remember that because the town includes the village, that the percentages of the costs are not being allocated. The same way as you're deciding. When you allocate, for example, half to the town and half to the village, the village residents pay more than half. The town residents pay less than half. That may be the intent, and I'm not debating the intent. But the mathematical calculation that we use needs to take, it, it take that into account, and I believe in the past it has never taken that into account. So for future reference, just, I would request that, you know, at least ask you to consider that.
Alright, thank you. Uh, Martin and Trust Grant.
Um, so it's the next one, the Von Del Cop.
Okay, sure.
Conservation, he's been fundraising. And uh, what? I would like us to vote on tonight. As I said earlier, it sounds like our grant from V H C B will be six hundred thousand for everything but reservoir. Um, the parking lot, the water tank, the office structure area and the ten acres that we've identified. And I don't know if it's possible to. I know Don sent us those maps earlier, if we could put that, I don't know, well, we have one person, and is he leaving?
I am sorry, but.
We have. Audience here. Um.
As the public, just say, go ahead, I think it's a great deal.
So. Anyway, um, I'll just keep talking.
I'm gonna send him a map.
Okay, while you find it. Tom Deva Voice, who has authorized me to disclose his name, is, has been kind of shaking some trees for private fundraising. He has one donor potentially interested in a, in a. Larger donation, um, particularly now that we are conserving the parcels by grass, up by Grassy Lane. There may be others interested, I think Donna, who is still here. Is um, also maybe working on some additional grants. What Tom needs for fundraising. What Tom needs for fundraising is us to set a number, it's not really fair if we say, if he raises four hundred thousand, and we say, oh gosh, we wanted one point five. So. I, my goal tonight is for the select board, if, if we don't think six hundred is enough to permanently conserve the property, and. I'll personally state, I, I don't, I think there's some fundraising capability out there, and I think this is the time to take advantage of that. We need to just say, okay, we would like to have a minimum of X amount. In order to conserve this property. So, I'm throwing that out there, if anyone. We asked at our public forums, and everybody was rah rah, yes, please conserve this property, it's really important that it be conserved. Only one person later emailed me a number, which was a million.
I was gonna say, that's where I was gonna start the bidding.
Yeah, I, I, that's a number I kind of like, it's a nice even number.
It's the minimum.
Um, yes.
Okay, that's fine.
You know, we do have, obviously, we've, we've already borrowed the money to buy Von Dell, but we know that there's work that has to be done on the dams, so. I, you know, if we get this money, we then have to decide what to do with it, and I would like to make sure it gets reinvested. In the actual property, but that's, that's another discussion for another time.
Well, collecting money for the property, that's.
Well. I.
World where to go.
Well, I think, and I think it's important for Tom to be able to tell people that that's the sense he's getting from the board, that.
Yeah.
That we're not gonna, you know, put the money toward new offices at town hall.
No.
Or plaques.
Or plaques. I think, yeah, I think it's also important that this is like, we're thinking about this numbers, and like, what's the value to us to restrict the land forever, we paid one point six million for it. So, yeah, I would, I would really like to see one million of, of, at the floor. If we could fundraise the entire cost, I would also be thrilled.
Yeah.
I think.
Well, there's plenty of work to be done.
Yeah, right, yeah, but I think.
Too much money is gonna be too much money.
Right. Yeah.
What I'd say is like, I think people are saying two things they want is.
Yes. Right.
If the vote is a million dollars. They go five million dollars, assumption is, you're gonna then approve the grant and the easement, so.
He was after five four hundred.
Yeah, so if you're saying a floor. You're also saying the top of them, right, so. I, I, so I think just be careful. Where you say, if you say a million dollars, they just need to reach a million dollars, assumption is, you're gonna approve it, so if you want higher. You can say higher, and then always change your mind later, it's so like, I mean, you're not tied to, you said two point five million dollars, right? And they raised nine hundred, you still include nine hundred, I'm saying like, just.
But we have to be realistic, I mean, that this has to be done by January, which isn't giving him a lot, a lot of time, I know he's started some preliminary discussions, so I don't. You know, if we set an unrealistic number, then I, I think we just. Will be deciding between six hundred or not inserting. So. And, you know, I, I go back to, you know, we told the voters. That, you know, two of the most important things about why we purchased this property are its use as a future water supply. Which will, the land, the land trust and V H C B easement will allow us. I'm hoping very creative language for all future uses for a water supply. The present uses, which are, you know, kind of the recreation and, you know, some pretty spectacular environmental aspects to the property. And then we did want to have some, some rainy day fund, and, you know, ten acres is a little less than I had hoped, but. Given the nature of the property, with how wet it is, it, it's hard to find usable, so usable land up there.
Maybe Karen could have thoughtful numbers.
Sure.
Let's see if anyone. Carrie Cliff, any, any questions, comments?
Yeah, I agree with the million dollars, I think that's a good goal. As a manual.
None from me.
So I would move that we set our fundraising goal at a million for the Von Del conservation easement. And that we authorize Tom Depplevoice to fundraise on behalf of town.
Second.
All of the favor?
I.
I.
Donna, any questions? She's there.
Okay.
Moving on.
F Y twenty-six, select board goals and objectives. Yeah, so we had some joint meetings the last few months, we're getting kind of close to the budget season, you, you received an email from me today that. Kind of the first round of the permanent budgets are in the budget, and we're just kind of making small additive voices, I know to everyone. The hope is to have kind of the goals, objectives voted on. Before you do a deep dive into the budget, so you can then use the evil factors going guiding through the budget process, and what you decide to. Add or change or adapt, or based on what you feel. The direction the town needs to head in. So that said. I can turn the lights off here, if the, if the board needs to see the screen up there, or if you, if you can't see the form in pocket. But I can kind of go over. Yes.
Like the tiny.
Tiniest print.
I'll shut up for that, I thought it was something to do with.
Um, so with the main, the main wastewater treatment plant upgrades. The analysis of potential merger and merger votes. Redirecting and desert committees and commissions. A capital plan, which are in the way, the village had traffic.
I have a question, yeah.
Is it one to ten? At nine point four for the wastewater treatment plant, but then it looks like it's.
Oh, yeah, some of those were just trying to, I didn't do, that should be an average. Okay. I haven't looked at the sheet in a while. So some of the, the, he's on the middle of, of more village, you know, improve town technology, zoning up by law that's already going on. Stephanie's also working on. Uh, she shared one of these two, we're really trying to break out. It's a little bigger. Kind of how the steps to success for these goals, you kind of look up here, I'll try to do a bigger. You know, trying to come up with what's the urgency, what's a timeline, what's a staff time allocated towards it. So this is wastewater plant, you know, when the bids, discussions, public tour just happened, you know, a select word voter allocations. Search of public forums you did tonight. Published talking points, weekly forums, update check and throw Tanner, the permanent process, state permits. You know, outstanding questions we may have about the goals, how to get there, and then try to kind of dig down what the time commitment of staff would be. This is very important to me, so boards recognize, you know, if you vote for a goal or a goal you support. You know, you're also kind of simply saying, hey, I support that. Staff will spend X amount of time working on this goal for next X amount, X amount of months. Board commitments high, so again, this is, you know, with sewage water one. Pass it one to three hours a week for board members. You know, I kind of started working on a merger analysis as well, this would be a different one, if you look here. You know, staff time would be low at first, and then move. Higher. As after town, after the vote at town meeting. So steps that's a little. Backloaded, where early on it wouldn't be much, and then it would speed up after town meeting, if this is one of the goals. How the strategy has been brought to there yet, which is probably metaphorical, Woodstock. I don't want to tell.
That was a good note, too.
Um, so that's kind of what we're trying to build up, so when, after you vote on them, we can present to you, say, okay, you, you approve these five goals, this was staff time's gonna look like. So you have a better sense of what your vote will impact, how we're working internally.
Okay.
One thing, I, I just had one comment, maybe. Understanding, I imagine a bulk of your time is just committed to things that have to happen. Regardless of what our goals might be, just a ordinary business in town, do we have that broken out, so that we even know like total time available? Does that make sense?
No, I, I think Cliff, what you're saying is, is the problem is that you can't predict that stuff, you know.
Yeah.
If you schedule ten hours a day to unpredictability and keep it to ten hours, that'll be, that'll be an amazing week for me.
Yeah.
So I, I think the point of kind of breaking out is to show, you know, that's. Me working five hours a week in the wastewater plants. Above everything else, you know, is what's gonna be required of me and everyone else. So there are things that, you know, may have to be pushed aside for, you know, these purposes, as, as much as we can. Yeah, Cliff, unfortunately, we don't have that number, because it, it does. Revolve on the unknown that we can't measure, and that unknowingly talking about rate of staff time could be. Twenty hours a week to fifty hours a week, depending on what the issue is. You know, how many meetings are that week, or, you know, how long the meetings are, what's going on internally in staff, if there's personnel issues, if there's concerns, if there's. Resident complaints, you know.
Yeah.
Impossible to, 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 to know.
Yeah, I guess my point was more so like, we should be realistic with how much potential time is available, is that essentially like five of these projects? Is, is what I'm hearing, is that about right, or is it, I mean, obviously, these are different sized projects too, so if it's one really big one. Maybe that takes the place of two, I guess that's what I was trying to get to, it's just like, what's realistic in terms of the number of these we can even address, you know?
Well, I think a, kind of partially answered too, but some of them are like heavy. Town hall staff time, and some of them are heavy on like other meetings and boards, what, like if I'm, if we're talking about. The town plan, bylaw review, that's all being right now out forced to the planning commission. There's things like town, all meeting tech, which I would imagine is less town staff intensive, maybe, or.
Uh, it's.
Than a wastewater treatment plant.
It's intensive for one person right now.
Okay.
Yeah. But yeah, Cliff, that's a good point.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna derail us, mostly I just wanted to make sure we're being realistic with like what we're choosing to prioritize, essentially.
Yeah, I think that's a great point, by Cliff, that is, like, I mean, if you look at the wastewater breakout, you know. I tried to. You know, urgency critical timeline, five months staff time high, right, so to me, that'd mean. If you've already wrote this, what's happening, like, my direction to staff is, the wastewater plants are top objective right now. So that means things get pushed aside, or, you know. Trying to give an example that Stephanie will push aside a, a tech meeting to do a meaningful wastewater plant, that's the objective. But she has, so then she has time to do the meat and tech later, but yeah. But the hope is that we'll meet, and pray we can have two weeks to kind of have the boards vote on any golden objectives. As you guys approach the budgets.
Yeah, I mean, I think the issue continues to be the tension between. What, what we're all collectively prioritizing, and then what each of our boards is, is prioritizing within that, right?
Yeah.
So we're voting on this tonight?
Uh, not here, and I, I don't think you're right for that, I think it was just more of a discussion of the trustees and the room for you guys to, you know, go into depth on anything that you want to, or. Talk about things you want to focus on, or if there's more information you want for the joint meeting on any of these goals or objectives.
I still think, I mean, I plan to bring this up with them, but I think that some of them could still be even further condensed, like support E D D. Goals and objectives, I don't think that's worth the space here, I think we hired that person, we try to support all, all of our staff, but it's up to us to develop what we want them to do. And it sounds like Abby's gonna also come to us with recommendations in addition to the goal that we have of developing strategies to increase housing. I just don't know. Yeah, why the other one would have a place. Same with project management and analysis software procedure, I guess my question for that is, because I know the trustees submitted that one, is that something that internal staff also want, or is that just something?
Yeah, and something else that conversation, again, maybe not here, but. There's. There's almost nothing that turns out is on staff, is on touch, even when it happens externally.
Right.
It, that does still flow through us, and we still are the ones who. Uh, they're running with it at the end, or enforce it at the end, or. Fix it at the end, if that's the case, or like, you know, even like the bylaws eventually will come in front of the boards, and I'll be an expert in the bylaws, and I come in front of them, so like. Everything does flow through the staff at some point, it's just when and how much. And so I think. I'm sorry, right?
No, 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 finish your thought, sorry.
I think, I think my goal having a joint meeting on this is for ideally everyone in the room to realize. We can't have fifteen goals and expect them all to be done, so we're gonna have. Realistically, three to five goals, with one of them being big, and that price will be too much to get done in, in a year, but. This idea of that we can't do everything all at once, unless. We want to add twenty of the staff members, you know, we. And so that's kind of, these goals should be based on staffing that we have, or closest staff that we have, and funds that we have.
And some of these can be done by the boards too.
Yes, but. It's still close, it's still.
Right.
But, so even when you give a, a task to, there, there's some things that I want to want, so Susan put together, I think the M L U went through the chamber, like. I provided some reviews for that, but it, it was mostly Susan's heavy work. Doesn't mean I wasn't involved in the M U going, so things do flow through, very rarely will a board member. Create something, staff have nothing to do with it, so it's just how much time is allocated, and then how much time that person needs on that project.
Yeah, okay.
So you're saying come, come to the meeting, come to the next joint meeting, and have three to five ranks, ideally.
Ideally, I would like, like, three to five voted on and approved by both boards.
Totally.
Total, I mean, I'm talking wastewater plant from now until March, and probably mostly our lives, like, that's, you know.
Ours too.
Yeah, you're two, you're definitely with this, so, and also, we're in the middle of the budget, so like, we're also, I, I spent the last city of working on the budget and nothing else, so like. There are other things happening that just have, to Cliff's point, happen every single day that just. You know, every single cycle, yeah.
Wendy, certainly.
Yes, all, any more questions from the board? Wendy, you have a question?
I do, thank you very much, Ray, I think I misread the agenda, my, my, it's a. Kind of a comment slash request that's budget related, I was thinking that this was budget talk when I saw F Y twenty-six, so. But it's. Excuse me for that, I could have brought this up at citizens' comments, however, what I'm here on behalf of. The Village Historic Preservation Commission, and. I'm noticing one of the goals, which is town buildings, village buildings. We put in for a grant with the state last year, it's a federal grant that comes through the National Park Service. To restore the windows in the town hall building, and the feedback that we got, we did not get the grant, as you are aware, because nothing's happened yet, but. The feedback was, if the municipality shows some commitment and interest in this project. In their budget, it makes for a stronger. Grant application, the, the kind of money that we were applying for is about fifty thousand dollars, the money gets sent around the state, not just. It's a little smaller pool than the flap grant Erica's mentioning, and it's. And not everyone gets, it's, there's, there's quite a few people applying, the C L G program, through the C L G program. So on raising this, we brought it up with the trustees, and we are going to go in front of the trustees in their December meeting with more concrete request consideration for budgeting. Towards. A restoration. And so, go ahead.
This should be brought up at a budget meeting, not.
Right, and I, I misread our agenda tonight, so I'm just making a comment, we're gonna start with the trustees, I just didn't want to have more time pass without getting this thought in your, in front of you. I, thank you.
We'll be having budget meetings, and you can bring it up then too.
Okay, thank you, okay. Okay, thank you. Okay.
That's it.
The chamber.
Yeah, no, but it was on the agenda, so.
We didn't add it.
No, I think, I think I can ask your permission to advertise the position. With it, so the we received a sign M L U for chambers today. Um so now we can advertise the open spots in the marketing committee.
Good.
Um the chamber members and have to comply, so I can post that uh next few days.
Yeah, that's fine.
Great.
Okay. Um and we need to go into executive session. Like a motion, it's going to executive session under one B S A three one three. To discuss the potential contract that goes conservancy. Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Well, we discussed.
No, because we don't have to vote on anything.
Right. Yes, it's the motion to get out of executive session.
I will make a motion to exit executive session.
Recording?
Yes, okay.
Will we do it again?
Yeah.
I make a motion to exit executive session. Second.
So all in favor?
I.
Next, so next is the motion to approve the minutes of ten October twenty-first, twenty-five, October thirty-first, twenty-five, and November tenth, twenty-five.
I had some non-substantive changes that I think Kitty made in recent. Um the only substantive change I had was for October twenty-first, under the approval of the quote for covered bridge repair, I wanted the minutes to reflect that we had tried to get other bids, um but hadn't received any and the work had to be done in a time limit. That was the only. And she's made, I didn't remember if she's made it.
Yeah, yeah, I know, yeah.
So is there a motion to approve the minutes? Has amended?
So moved?
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Hi.
Motion to adjourn? Your second? All in favor?